We're going to get started, everyone. First off, we have Rob Vanderbliss, Division Counsel.
Good morning, everyone. Doing video?
Yep. Let's.
Morning, everyone. My name is Rob Vanderbliss. I'm from the Office of General Counsel. This hearing on the Community Services Block Grant State Plan is being conducted through video conferencing in accordance with the Notice of Public Hearing appearing in the June 9 New York State Register. Individuals who wish to provide comment may do so, and testimony will be limited to 10 minutes. Individuals may also submit written testimony through Close of Business on July 16, 2021. Although many meetings are returning to in-person since the end of the COVID disaster emergency, this hearing is not required to be conducted in person. Because the State Register notice announced that this meeting would be conducted virtually and because adequate facilities may not have been attainable in time, DOS will continue the hearing in this format. I'll turn it over to Manny Rosa, Director of the Division of Community Services.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to join us, to participate in this public hearing on the development and the proposed new CSBG state plan for New York for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. It's a two-year plan. We appreciate your input, your feedback. We're going to use that, hopefully, to make the plan better once we hear your comments. I am joined here by Nikki Battistoni of our office and Wern Hart, who is our Fiscal Bureau Director. There are many DCS team members and our Deputy Secretary is also on this call, Vilda Mayuga. So again, truly appreciate your taking the time out of your busy schedules to share with us your thoughts and how to make the plan better as we move forward. So we'll start with our first presenter.
When I call your name, please unmute yourselves. So first up, we have Jackie Orr from NISCA presenting testimony.
Say what NISCA is, please.
New York State Community Action Association.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Jackie Orr. I'm the CEO at the New York State Community Action Association, NISCA. I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide feedback on the Department of State's 2022 and 2023 CSBG application and plan. NISCA is a nonprofit membership agency representing the 47 community action agencies serving the 62 counties in New York State. As a community action association in New York, NISCA is a direct recipient of CSBG discretionary funds through the New York State Department of State Division of Community Services. These funds support the provision of training and technical assistance and allows NISCA to facilitate the network's information sharing, peer mentoring, leadership development, and collaborative initiatives. NISCA also distributes a comprehensive range of resource materials, including the Annual Poverty Report, the Community Action Resource Guide, the NISCA Annual Report, and monthly NISCA newsletters. Also, since 2011, NISCA has been designated as a lead agency in the Federal Region Two Regional Performance and Innovation Consortium to coordinate technical assistance and training, support best practices, and enhance the capacity and innovation in the community action agencies and state associations within the Region Two, which consists of New York, New Jersey, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands. So we would like to recognize the Department of State and the Division of Community Services for their support and advocacy for community action. We thank Secretary of State Rosanna Rosado for her leadership and support for the statewide community action network. We appreciate Vilda Mayuga's, the Deputy Secretary of State for Economic Opportunity, for her commitment to community action. And Director Manuel Rosa and his staff have shown their support and dedication to the network. Mr. Rosa is a true advocate of community action in New York, and we have appreciated working with him the last few years. So NISCA offers the following recommendations for consideration for the 2022-2023 state plan. I'm going to be doing this by sections according to the sections in the state plan. So for Section 3, State Development, State Plan Development and Statewide Goals, the network appreciates the process used this year to develop this draft CSBG state plan and monitoring guidelines. This is the first time in recent memory where DOS provided the community action network with an opportunity to offer insights into the plan's development, not just an opportunity to comment on an already developed plan. In partnership with NISCA, a work group of DOS and DAA representatives met on a regular basis to walk through and review the current state plan and make suggestions for developing this 2022-23 state plan. The network recommends this model of development and review continues for future state plans. NISCA encourages DOS to invest in a software system to alleviate the burdensome work imposed on community action agencies to provide documentation for the annual compliance review of organizational standards and other reporting requirements. We are pleased this is included as a state plan goal and should be prioritized. Currently, the process is cumbersome and labor-intensive for community action agencies, and there is no uniform system by which CAA shares their documentation with DOS. There are several electronic systems used by other state CSBG offices. Using such a system would alleviate the amount of time and resources spent on these administrative tasks for both community action agencies and DOS. Under Section 6, Organizational Standards for Eligible Entities, NISCA supports the recently established program and fiscal monitoring process and guidelines. Instituting a risk-based monitoring model is beneficial for the entire network. This process maintains consistent monitoring for all community action agencies while also providing more extensive support to the agencies with greater needs. However, communication with the network about this process has been less than ideal. DOS should consider more timely and comprehensive communication. NISCA also suggests DOC, DOS, sorry, consider combining both program and fiscal monitoring visits to reduce the burden on agencies in preparing for these time-intensive visits. NISCA suggests, including an estimated number of days it takes the Division of Community Services to review and approve a contract. The draft plan indicates the length of time an agency has to complete and submit the required documents to DOS, which is 21 days, and the number of days for the Office of Attorney General and the State Comptroller's Office to conduct their review, which is 15 days each. DCS should be able to include in the plan an approximate number of days it takes staff to approve a grantee contract. NISCA suggests DOS eliminate the submission of duplicate documents. The community action network requests that both DOS fiscal and program representatives work closely together and develop a process for sharing CAA-submitted documents. Presently, CAAs gather documentation for program staff and then are often asked to provide these same documents to fiscal staff. It would be beneficial if DOS fiscal and program could coordinate a system by wish to share these documents internally to reduce the time burden placed on community action agencies. Under Section 7, State Use of Funds, NISCA is pleased that DOS has included discretionary dollars for community action agency special needs. The CSBG grantee capacity building funds will assist agencies that need additional support. However, we request that DOS develop a process that specifies how agencies request this funding. NISCA recommends that DOS continue to consult with the community action network to list a feedback about community needs so discretionary funds can be directed to priority needs, innovative pilots, and the expansion of best practices and evidence-based programming. We are pleased that DOS plans to spend discretionary funds on fatherhood initiatives. DOS has supported a small fatherhood pilot involving three community action agencies, and further discretionary funding will allow the expansion of a fatherhood focus across the network and lever CSBG funds to secure additional funding. Additionally, we are pleased that social equity is also to be supported with discretionary funding as community action agencies are addressing and advancing social justice in their local communities. The community action network strongly encourages the state to offer discretionary funds only within the community action network. These funds are intended to be used by the federally designated anti-poverty network. If discretionary grants are made to organizations outside of the community action network, NISCA requests that these grantees be held to the same standards as community action agencies. This will include ensuring that funded projects are driven by needs identified in a community needs assessment, programs are outcome-focused, and there is an established mechanism for low-income customer input. In any out-of-network RFA process, we recommend that DOS consider a rating system whereby community action agencies are awarded points that recognize their ability to meet both the national CSBG organizational standards and specific New York State indicators. Additionally, the RFA process at DOS has been significantly delayed. For example, the state received CSBG CARES funding in May 2020, and the RFA was not made available until May 2021. While the pandemic may explain some of the delay, DOS has been late in issuing RFAs for discretionary funds. Under Section 8, State Training and Technical Assistance, NISCA recognizes and thanks DOS for their continued support for Community Action Angels New York. This is the innovative statewide project to build CAA capacity through volunteer coordination, recruitment, and engagement. NISCA will continue to strengthen its partnership with the Angels to increase the capacity of the network to recruit, engage, and develop volunteers. The state network of community action agencies place a great deal of value in ongoing training and technical assistance. NISCA is pleased to have been the recipient of CSBG discretionary training and technical assistance funding for many years and is included in the current draft plan. We encourage DOS to continue to support NISCA's efforts in the delivery of a wide range of training and technical assistance and statewide coordination and communication to enhance and support the community action network. Section 9, State Linkages and Communication, NISCA encourages DOS to develop deeper linkages and partnerships with other state agencies. It is essential that DOS continue to develop and maintain partnerships with other state agencies, such as the Office of Mental Health, Office of Children and Family Services, and Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance. Partnerships with these agencies could considerably advance the state's commitment to statewide fatherhood initiatives and to trauma-informed care, as well as to ensure that the well-established community action network is considered a part of any new state initiatives that focus on poverty in New York. And a few additional comments. Implementation of the Governor's Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise Initiative, which NISCA and its member agencies support, continues to challenge community action agencies, particularly in upstate communities where the MWBE requirements make it difficult to find local vendors. Agencies are frequently forced to purchase services outside of their communities and not use local vendors, which have long supported, which have been long-term supporters of the agencies. Therefore, we recommend looking at the requirements around engaging MWBE vendors to streamline the process. And lastly, we recommend the CSBG Advisory Council review the CSBG state plan semiannually to ensure that we, as a network, are meeting the processes and goals outlined in the plan. We at NISCA look forward to continuing to support the network's collaboration with DOS and developing the partnership on mutual respect, trust, and transparency to benefit community action in New York. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to share my comments today.
Thank you, Jackie. Next up, we have Dennis Wilson from Fullmont Community Action. Dennis, you're muted.
Am I off mute now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone and hear everyone. I am Dennis Wilson, and I have worked with the Department of State for over 25 years as the Executive Director of Fullmont Community Action Agency. I'm happy to be with you today to comment on the 2022-2023 CSBG state plan. Our agency holds the Department of State and its staff in the highest regard. Fullmont is a local provider of the WIC, Weatherization, and Head Start programs. We also operate four community services outreach centers, which are supported with CSBG funds across the two counties that we serve, in addition to our administrative offices in Fonda, where we have a small food pantry and some small services also. Where eligible families and individuals can receive emergency services, such as food pantries, utility and rental assistance, as well as family support, such as volunteer income tax assistance, and family development and employment support, and referrals to all of our programs. I'd like to begin by thanking Secretary of State Rosanna Rosado and Deputy Secretary of State for Economic Opportunity, Vilda Mayuga, for their leadership and support. I'd also like to thank Manuel Rosa, Director of the New York State Department of State Division of Community Services, for his commitment to the agencies under his purview, as evidenced recently by his attendance as a guest speaker at our May Community Action Month celebration. His enthusiasm for what he does was felt by everyone in the room who heard him speak. Additionally, he is recognized statewide for his support amongst the New York State Community Action Network. And finally, I'd like to recognize the importance of the roles of our Program Analyst, Amy Kohler, and Senior Accountant Craig Howard. Their interactions with our agency have always proven to be very valuable to us. I'd like to also recognize the great work of the New York State Community Action Association, for which I am proudly a board member, and their support through training, advocacy, and education, which is invaluable to the network. Fullmont serves the economically disadvantaged primarily in Fulton and Montgomery Counties and also surrounding counties in upstate New York. Fulton and Montgomery Counties have very high rates of poverty. The funding we receive through the Community Services Black Grant is utilized to provide direct poverty-reducing services, helps stabilize our consumers' lives, and assists them in becoming self-sufficient. Community action programs are the front line in the war against poverty. Our use of results-oriented management accountability, or Roma, and our holistic strengths-based approach to serving our consumers has proven effective time and time again. CSBG legislation requires the inclusion of low-income participants on our Board of Directors and therefore in every step of our planning and implementation and reporting process. I found that the regional meetings conducted by the Department of State, along with NISCA, have been proven to be very valuable for the dissemination of information provided by the Department of State and also for the exchange of information amongst agencies. Utilizing monitoring, I thought somebody said something. Utilizing monitoring visits and guidance on standards throughout the annual compliance review of operational standards across, and the triennial review for accountability and compliance with standards tracks. The Department of State's programmatic and fiscal staff have been incredibly efficient in ensuring that we are kept up to date on all changes that we maintain and that we maintain the highest standards in everything we do. As a result of their oversight, I feel that Fullmont continually demonstrates accountability and the wise use of governmental funds. We do agree with the reduction of onsite monitoring visits and the substitution of desk reviews for high-performing agencies outlined in the state plan. This will free up Department of State staff to focus on agencies that require more technical assistance. We recommend and agree that the allocation of discretionary funds available should be distributed amongst the 47 eligible caps to address local initiatives to enhance current programs or to fill service gaps using innovative strategies to meet community needs. The Community Services Black Grant Income Guidelines are too restrictive at 125% of the federal poverty guidelines. And I can't stress enough that we really need to have that raised on a permanent basis to 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. I know that's not a state decision, but I hope that through these statements made by others here and myself, this gets forward to the federal government by the state. In relation to the current requirement to a budget amendment when there is any dollar differential, this creates a tremendous amount of extra work, and approval process can be very lengthy, as well as cause a level of anxiety for management due to the uncertainty of getting approval and how lack of approval may impact decisions made by the agency and agency operations overall. In the past, we were allowed a 10% line item interchange before requiring a budget amendment. This allows us more flexibility in managing the program. Please reconsider moving back to the 10% line item interchange. It's very important to me, and I feel some of my colleagues have expressed it also, and I really wish the Department of State could make a change on this. In closing, I'd like to reiterate our agency's satisfaction with the consistently high level of leadership demonstrated by the Department of State. We can't express enough the value of the regular monitoring visits by field representatives and the role of the newest assessments in helping Fullmont to maintain compliance in an organized and timely fashion. We appreciate the continual guidance provided by the Department of State, and we look forward to maintaining a mutually beneficial relationship in years to come. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Mr. Wilson. Next up, we have Tina Zerbien from Cataragus Community Action.
Good morning. Our agency very much appreciates the opportunity to comment on the CSBG program and the Department of State's plan for the use of CSBG funding. I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Cataragus Community Action. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the New York State Community Action Association and as the first Vice President of the CSBG Advisory Council. I've been with the community action network for over 40 years. Cataragus Community Action, or CCA, is the designated anti-poverty organization for Cataragus County, although we also provide some level of programming in Livingston, Wyoming, Chautauqua, and Allegheny Counties. Because of this broad service territory, CCA recently rebranded and uses the DBA Connecting Communities in Action. CCA brings about $11 million into the Western New York region and employs about 150 individuals. We are an eligible entity and direct recipient of CSBG funds, which allows us the flexibility to assess and respond to the needs that are unique to our community, to forge strong community partnerships, to leverage millions of dollars in additional resources, to recruit and retain volunteers, to centralize and provide holistic services to individuals and families, and to nimbly create and incubate programming that is effective in the battle against poverty. At CCA, we provide an array of services and opportunities that build resilient communities and help vulnerable people achieve economic, physical, and emotional security. These include, but are not limited to, the prevention of homelessness and supportive services for the homeless population residing in any one of our emergency or permanent residential housing facilities. We also provide clinical mental health services in a variety of settings, including the Cataragus County Jail, provide comprehensive services to victims of crime, including sexual assault and domestic violence, and a broad spectrum of nutrition programs designed to counteract conditions of hunger, like community gleaning and gardening, coordination of the county's food pantry and soup kitchen network, summer food service, and SNAP outreach. CCA offers energy and housing programs that include weatherization assistance, mobile home replacement, and home repairs. These programs are targeted to the elderly, persons with disabilities, and those for whom housing is a major social determinant of poor health. About 200 units of housing for seniors, the disabled, and homeless persons are owned or managed by the agency. CCA staff are co-located at the local Department of Social Services and at every school district in Cataragus County in a cooperative effort to prevent child abuse, offer parenting programs, prevent truancy and the placement of children in foster care, and to engage fathers in the lives of their children. Workforce development is also a priority for CCA, and the agency has utilized CSBG discretionary funds in the past to create and implement a highly successful culinary arts training program. In an effort to create a poverty-informed and a trauma-informed community, our agency regularly offers educational forums and training to our partners, including government agencies, elected officials, healthcare organizations, and other not-for-profits, with a focus on hearing the voices of the poor and continuously improving our strategies for creating opportunities for self-efficacy. CCA is the lead agency for the Trauma-Informed Coalition in Cataragus County. Two CCA staff are nationally certified ACE Interface Trainers, which has moved our agency and community toward becoming trauma-informed and self-healing. CCA employees hold designations as Certified Financial Social Workers, use the nationally-recognized Financial Planning Guide, known as Your Money, Your Goals, have completed training on Bridges Out of Poverty and Communication Across Barriers training from Donna Beagle's Poverty Institute. We boast three Roma Implementers, two Roma Trainers, and two Certified Community Action Professionals. Due to this level of skill, in addition to our 56 years of experience in the work of fighting poverty, we feel that we are uniquely positioned to invest CSBG dollars in our community, addressing the causes and conditions of poverty, and to track and report the outcomes of that investment. We at CCA would like to acknowledge Manuel Rosa, Director of the Division of Community Services with the New York State Department of State. He's been very active in our network and committed to providing the best opportunities possible to low-income families in our communities. We thank him for his commitment to community action. With regard to discretionary funds, we ask that the Department of State offer these funds competitively only within the community action network, as opposed to all community-based organizations. There is no measurable evidence that other non-governmental entities have performed as well or better than the community action grantees. And as I mentioned earlier in my testimony, community action agencies have extensive experience and unquestionably the best skill sets in New York State to combat the central causes of poverty. It is the mission of community action agencies to carry out the CSBG Act, and we alone are uniquely suited to do so in a manner that is in keeping with the legislation, that is effective and measurable, and that guarantees maximum feasible participation of the poor. If discretionary funds must be made competitively available outside the CAA network, then DOS should consider an RFP and a rating system whereby applicants are awarded points based upon their ability to meet both the national CSBG organizational standards and the specific New York State indicators. Additional points should be awarded for the specific training and certification, such as ACE and trauma training, Roma, and the knowledge of the causes and conditions of poverty. We are delighted that DOS has included fatherhood initiatives to receive discretionary funding. CCA is the lead agency for a three-county fatherhood pilot project that has exceeded expectations for reconnecting fathers with their children, enhancing financial stability in families, and encouraging healthy co-parenting across Cataragus, Allegheny, and Stuben Counties. Further discretionary funding will allow the community action network to expand a fatherhood focus across the state of New York. Already, a group of 10 backbone CAAs has been identified, agencies willing to commit to fatherhood as a statewide goal. These CAAs stand ready to creatively use CSBG, OTDA, OCFS, and other leveraged funding to improve the lives of children in New York State. Why is this important? Involved fatherhood is linked to better outcomes on nearly every measure of child well-being, from cognitive development and educational achievement to self-esteem and pro-social behavior. Children who grow up with involved fathers are 39% more likely to earn mostly A's in school, 45% less likely to repeat a grade, 60% less likely to be suspended or expelled from school, twice as likely to go to college and find stable employment after high school, 75% less likely to have a teen birth, and 80% less likely to spend time in jail. Families are strengthened by supporting fathers, providing services and Providing services and programming that aim to increase fathers' positive parenting skills, appropriate discipline, effective communication, emotional support, and stress management can have a double effect, reducing risk factors for child abuse and increasing protective factors. Additionally, we are pleased that social equity is also targeted for support with discretionary funding as community action agencies are addressing and advancing social justice in their communities. CSBG discretionary funds used for grantee capacity building will assist agencies that need that additional support. We do request that Department of State develop a process by which to hear the needs of the network and structure requests for funding. With regard to training and technical assistance, the New York State Community Action Association plays a critical role in providing training and technical assistance to community action agencies across the state, and offers a level of commitment and expertise that allows agencies to meet evolving demands and embrace evidence-based practices. We support the inclusion of funding for NISC in the state plan. With regard to program and fiscal monitoring guidelines, CCA appreciates the process used this year to develop this draft CSBG state plan and the monitoring guidelines, providing the CAA network with an opportunity to offer insights into the plan's development, not just an opportunity to comment on an already-developed plan. The network recommends that this model of development and review continue into the future. We strongly support the development of a software system utilized by DOS to store documentation for the ACROSS and other reporting requirements. Currently, the process is burdensome for agencies, and there is little consistency in the format for submission of documents. Utilizing an electronic upload system would alleviate the amount of time and resources spent on document sharing and review for both DOS and the agencies. With regard to MWBE requirements, we would encourage the Department of State to request a waiver for the MWBE goals. While we understand the overarching philosophy of support for minority and women-owned businesses, the work of meeting these goals is onerous at best. Rural areas have a real deficit of certified business owners, and their requirement flies in the face of our attempts to support local businesses, small businesses that are often owned by people with low and moderate incomes. With regard to partnerships with other state agencies, we fully support the development of stronger partnerships with other state agencies, which are all too often unaware of the power and flexibility of the Community Action Network. We support the partnership with New York State Department of Labor and encourage similar partnerships with the Office of Mental Health, Office of Children and Family Services, and Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance. Partnerships with these agencies could very significantly advance the state's commitment to statewide fatherhood initiatives and to trauma-informed care. While the Division of Community Services has made significant efforts to improve the timeliness of contract and amendment processing, as well as communication with grantees, delays do continue to be a challenging reality for the Community Action Network. We urge DCS to continue to address these delays and work towards seamless communication with the network agencies. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today about the draft amendments to the CSBG plan, about community action, and about the fight against poverty. We look forward to our continued relationship with the Department of State as they stand with us in that fight.
Thank you, Tina. Next, next up, we have Amy Turner from Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency.
Good morning, everyone. First, I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to provide this input and important testimony about the Community Services Block Grant Program and the wonderful impact it has in communities across New York State. I'm the Executive Director of Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. I am also a board member with the New York State Community Action Association and Region Two Representative to the National Community Action Partnership Board of Directors. First, on behalf of our agency, I want to acknowledge Manny Rosa, Director of the Division of Community Services with New York State. Manny's been very active in our network and extremely committed to providing the best opportunities to low-income families across New York State. So we just wanted to personally extend our thank you for your hard work and passion, Manny. The Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, we provide a variety of services to low-income people in Oneida and Herkimer Counties, which includes the city of Utica. We have an annual operating budget of approximately $18 million, and we employ 250-plus full-time employees at 24 sites, give or take, at any given time. We have a proven record of fiscal accountability and transparency, as evidenced by our annual audits, which are available via our website for the public to review. The Community Services Block Grant Program funds have enabled our agency to create a central intake process and a model of service integration for all families. This enables families in our area easy access to our resources and other opportunities in the community. The Community Services Block Grant Funding defines who we are as a community action agency. It sets our mission to help people living in poverty as a whole agency. The organizational standards were developed to ensure that the entire agency is performing at a level that will produce the required results. We use Community Services Block Grant Funding for capacity building for the entire agency, not just CSBG-funded staff. In fact, we have very few staff funded completely by CSBG. As stated, our services are integrated, and our funding is as well. We should be allowed to continue to use CSBG to support any activity the agency needs related to the organizational standards. It is very important that grantees have a significant role in the development of this management plan. This is very important to the success of the program and the grantees. We have over 50 years of experience creating and shaping programs for our local communities, and we should all be actively involved. We encourage the Department of State to continue their efforts to solicit meaningful feedback on a regular basis from all the grantees. This year, the plan was actually released after the regional meeting started, which didn't allow for all grantees to hear directly from the Department of State on the changes to the plan. The network also received a one-week notice for the legislative hearing, which does not provide ample time to present testimony. The plan states that grantees will be provided three weeks to complete their contract package. Although we do know approximately when this process will be, the timeframe is not long enough to plan thoroughly and review with the Board of Directors. A longer timeframe is recommended. We strongly recommend discretionary funding only be available to existing eligible entities resulting in amendment to their contract if selected. We did not recognize any CSBG funding in this year's consolidated funding announcement, and we do support that effort to not allow those funds to be part of that competitive process. New York's most vulnerable families will be best served by maintaining and growing this existing network of eligible entities. These community action agencies have been in existence for years and are in touch with the changing needs of their local communities. Offering Community Services Block Grant Funding to other CBOs has created unnecessary competition locally with established partners, especially during difficult financial times and scarce resources. Providing these resources directly to eligible entities would result in more effective outcomes. There are too many priorities listed as discretionary funding in the plan. I think these should be prioritized to maximize impact. The description of services and activities in the Section 7.9F should be expanded to allow for innovative pilots, expansion of best practices, and evidence-based programming, or the spread and scaling up of solutions and poverty. These concepts should be generated by the Community Action Network in an ongoing dialogue with the Department of State, and not limited to the few activities listed in the plan. One such concept is CSBG financial support for the ACE Interface Train the Trainer Program. This program was designed to support rapid dissemination of adverse childhood experience and resilience science to promote trauma-informed practices in our communities. By training certified trainers in the Community Action Network, we in turn have trained our employees, board members, and community partners, including faith-based organizations, to help us build self-healing communities. Our agency was part of this initiative in 2021, excuse me, and we would welcome additional support from CSBG. We are also very supportive of the proposed statewide fatherhood initiative and plan to be an active partner in that process. However, once again, these resources should only be available to CSBG-eligible grantees. We support the plan in allowing entities to carry over unexpended funds into next year. This flexibility provides us a level of administrative management not available with many other funding sources. Our agency is very supportive of the plan's intent to continue working with the New York State Community Action Association. The association provides us valuable support, training, and technical assistance to the network of agencies throughout New York State. The website provides agencies with the ability to access resources quickly and easily. The New York State Community Action Association provides the network with relevant grant announcements, legislation that affects our programs, and other very pertinent information. In addition, the association offers regular professional development opportunities to our staff and our board. NBCAA recognizes and thanks Department of State for their continued support for community action angels in New York. This innovative statewide project to build our capacity through volunteer coordination, recruitment, engagement has focused on programs and workshops that highlight engaging the low-income population and volunteerism. We at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency also support the annual Self-Assessment Tool, ACROSS, and the updated Tri-Annual Tracks as well. Both are aligned with the national organizational standards and will provide all grantees with an opportunity to ensure compliance and reach for excellence. However, we have found duplication in reporting with these tools and our visits from our program analysts. In addition, the contracting process is very cumbersome. We recommend the continued use of committees consisting of grantee representatives and Department of State staff to examine these duplications and contracting issues for future years. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency supports and is very pleased to see the new program and fiscal monitoring process and guidelines. Instituting a risk-based monitoring model is beneficial to the entire network. The new system is twofold. It will maintain consistent monitoring for all community action agencies while also providing more extensive to support to those agencies with greater needs that may be experiencing challenges. These agencies will benefit from more targeted technical assistance and guidance from the Department of State staff. The risk-based monitoring model also clearly represents a more effective and efficient use of the limited number of Department of State program and fiscal staff. Please consider removing the MWBE requirement from our Community Services Block Grant contracts. This is federal funding that would not otherwise be subject to this requirement in other states. Although we support the intent of the requirement, it is especially burdensome to upstate grantees where qualified MWBE businesses are not readily available. We encourage the Department of State to continue their work on developing strong partnerships with other state agencies to promote the strength of the Community Action Network's service delivery system and community engagement initiatives. It would be amazing if other funding became available through the state, specifically targeted to address poverty, that it would be distributed through the Community Action Network. In closing, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the Secretary of State and the staff within the Division of Community Services for their commitment to this valuable program and their support to community action agencies across New York State. We are fortunate in New York to have such outstanding leadership that stays on the cutting edge of new initiatives and ensures the effective and successful implementation of the Community Services Block Grant Program. Thank you very much.
Amy. Up next, we have Darlene Mack Brown from Mohawk Valley Community Action.
Good afternoon, everyone. Close to it. Hi, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for allowing me to testify today on behalf of the Community Services Block Grant Program and the positive impact it has had on the communities across New York State. I am the Community Engagement Director here at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, and because Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency has been able to provide a variety of services to low-income and disadvantaged individuals and families in Oneida and Herkimer Counties, which include the inner city of Utica and the outermost rural areas. I would like to acknowledge Manuel A. Rosa, Director of the Division of Community Services with the New York State Department of State. Thank you for your assistance with helping people help themselves and each other. The CSBG program funds have allowed Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency to do a number of things. We had a few food drives where we have been able to feed people with the highest needs in Oneida and Herkimer Counties. We also provided two local pop-up vaccine clinics at two of our sites, one of which was in the inner city, where people were able to easily access us by walking. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency continues to attend various community events so that we can distribute literature that was printed out thanks to CSBG funds. The information provided ensures that individuals receive the correct information about vaccines. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency has created a vaccine committee and have collaborated with the Oneida County Emergency Services and the local health clinics. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency has also joined in with partner agencies within the two-county area for outreach events that allow us to inform individuals of all the programs that we offer. Because of the CSBG funding, we are able to purchase equipment that could help people in the rural areas who are disadvantaged and have no access to internet services to apply for the programs in person. We're able to do this onsite, meeting their needs where they are. CSBG funding has also allowed Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency to train staff to become getting-ahead facilitators and training other staff. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency is also communicating with other agencies to set up various trainings in the inner-city community, as well as cafes in the inner city and the rural areas of Oneida and Herkimer Counties. CSBG funds would also allow for Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency to reach even more individuals by increasing the funds that we use for outreach and advocacy. We are one of the leading agencies in this area and plan to continue to work on engaging our communities with the programs that we have here. On behalf of Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, I would like to say thank you to the Secretary of State and the staff within the Division of the Community Services, the CSBG program, for allowing me the opportunity to speak during this hearing. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, thank you very much. Up next, we have Chloe Wood from Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. Chloe, if you're trying to speak, you're still [BLEEP].
She said she was having internet trouble, so maybe she has been kicked off the meeting.
Okay, we'll move along, and we will come back to Chloe if she's able to join. And then up next, we have Renee S. Tuggel from Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am the Fiscal Director at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, and today I'm going to share my story with you and why I think that the Community Services Block Grant is so important. I was born in a very rural community in the South. I lived with my mother, stepfather, brother, and sister. I vaguely remember when I was about four. My stepfather told my father, "I have a deal for you. If you stop visiting, you do not have to pay child support." My real father had a drinking problem, so this was a great deal for him. My stepfather had a drinking problem and always treated me different. This was because I was not his real child. I endured 16 years of physical, mental, and sexual abuse. Meanwhile, my brother and sister got some physical and mental abuse. My mother loved my father three times, and for the first two times swore to be better, and he swore to be better, and she believed him, and she went back. The abuse only got worse. The third time she left, she left for good. My mother was doing good in the beginning. She worked full-time, and life was great, no more worries. We moved- We moved into our own place, and she began to drink, and then, as I recall, she forgot she was a parent. She lost custody of my siblings to my stepfather. There were issues with head lice, roaches, and eventually it was her and I alone in a house with no utilities. We cooked our meals on a campfire and bathed in our neighbor's outside spigot. I can't help but think, had my mother had the same support systems through Community Services Block Grant we have here at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, she would have been empowered and understand her effects on future generations. By this time, I had dropped out of school in the ninth grade and was pregnant. Then men started to take advantage of me. Come on, just do it. It isn't like you can get pregnant. I was even offered money to give up my child for adoption. What I did know is that I would not allow anyone to take my child, take my child, and his life would be different. My mother and I got fast-tracked into housing with rental assistance similar to the help provided by the Community Services Block Grant. I still to this day think that a neighbor helped with the process. We moved into housing, and things seemed to be moving up again. My mother had a boyfriend that I did not see eye-to-eye with, primarily because he was my age. I met a man that was older than me and treated me good. It seemed to be a dream come true. He wanted to help me, and he was unable to have children. It was perfect. The man that I was pregnant by had respectfully apologized and stated, "I am not responsible enough for a child," and walked away. The first year of marriage, there were few signs that should have given me warning, but I didn't listen to my gut. Like a statistic, as soon as I moved away from my family and friends, the abuse started, and I was right back where I had started. Eventually, we moved to New York to be closer to his family. The abuse continued for another four years. At this point, I remembered what I had said from the beginning. My child was not going to go through what I had. With the help of his family, I was moved into a local domestic violence shelter and tried to get everything back on track. I moved into housing again with rental assistance and was provided with furniture vouchers because I had nothing. This is the reason why the Angels Program through the Community Services Block Grant is so important to me. I then began searching for jobs. I remember walking into Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency and telling the receptionist, "I need income. I will do anything, even if it's clean toilets." The woman helped me through the process, and I was hired as a cook. From that point forward, Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency played a crucial role in my life and embraced me like family. My hours were altered to accommodate being a mother of a small child, patience of numerous family court appointments, and introduced me to many friends. After five years, I knew I did not want to cook forever, and after the push of a friend and one amazing motivational speaker, I applied for administrative assistant position and was successful. Shortly after that, I applied for executive assistant and was successful again. This year, my son turned twenty-two and is the manager and runs his own shoe store. His dream come true. September of this year, I celebrated eighteen years at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. I also celebrated eighteen years with the most kind and patient man I've ever met that was the maintenance man, is now the resource specialist at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. With the help of the agency wrapping its arms around me, I have accomplished so much. Amazing husband, a successful child with no worries, bachelor's degree in nonprofit business management, earned my CCAP, and went from a ten-month cook to the fiscal director. I could never do this without agencies like Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency and programs like Community Services Block Grant and a host of coworkers that I now call family. My story is a perfect example of how incredibly successful the great programs like the ones supported by the Community Services Block Grant, provided by community action agencies like Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, provide across the state. Without even realizing, yet every person I came in contact with during my eighteen years here at the agency, each one of them used the information they had from great Community Services Block Grant programs like Strengthening Families, Out-of-School Youth, Community Engagement, Summer Rec, just to name a few, to guide and teach me to be a better parent, responsible adult, a good community member, and overwhelming urge to give back to those in need. Again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Before we continue, I have to tell you that you're an inspiration, and your courage, and your testimony in sharing your story with us can't be matched. You know, it's not only brave, very frankly, but it reminds us why we need to serve. Congratulations to you for all of your accomplishments. Congratulations to your colleagues in Mohawk Valley. I think that you speak for the hundreds of thousands of people who have been served by this program and why we need to continue it. I've been here three years, very frankly, and you're the best reason why I'm here. So, thank you very much for just sharing that story with us, for inspiring us, and for reminding us what we need to do in our service. Okay? And I wish you all the very best. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have Maureen Abbott from Tioga Opportunities.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hold on just a second. I didn't know when I was going to be up, so I apologize. Okay. So, I am the Executive Director of Tioga Opportunities, also a board member and Vice President of the New York State Community Action Association, a nationally-certified Roma trainer, and I just celebrated thirty years of work in the Community Action Network in New York State. And like Renee, I also have benefited from services of community action as I am a former Head Start parent, and my daughter now that was in Head Start is a dental hygienist and serves low-income families throughout the Binghamton and Endicott Vessel area. Tioga Opportunities provides a variety of services to the most vulnerable residents of Tioga County and in Brum County through the weatherization and power programs. While Tioga County's poverty rate covers around eleven percent, it is the almost thirty percent of county residents who are counted in the ALIS data, which is asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed, who find themselves victim of the welfare cliff and struggling to meet basic needs for themselves and their families, even as employed individuals. CSBG funds have historically provided community action agencies the ability to develop services in response to identified needs when other funding or new initiatives or variations of existing services are not available. These dollars have been instrumental in TOI's ability to purchase a data software system, hire staff to assist individuals and families that come to TOI in crisis, to train staff in financial, social work, and family development, and also have provided partial funding for a community development coordinator to work on strengthening our communities in our county. Our agency has an annual operating budget of approximately seven million dollars and employs eighty employees. TOI's management and admin costs in total hover around nine percent of the total annual agency budget, with the greatest majority of funds going to direct services. While we are proud of this, it means that a small group of dedicated employees in support services, including fiscal payroll, human resources, et cetera, carry a heavy load in managing all of the crucial functional aspects of the agency. Processes through Department of State that are largely duplicative in relation to application submissions or require grantees to submit forms, documents, with a short turnaround time puts undue stress and pressure on supportive services staff. Again, reiterating what others have said, it's very important that grantees have a role in the development of the management plan. In the past, we were given opportunities to comment on the plan, but it had already been developed. I particularly have been very appreciative of opportunities given to myself and other executive directors and CEOs to provide feedback on monitoring tools and processes and to be included on work groups looking to streamline the ACROSS and TRACKS process. This is very important to the success of the program and the grantees. The network has over fifty years of experience creating and shaping programs for their communities, and they should actively be involved in the development of tools and processes aimed at strengthening the network statewide. We encourage the Department of State to continue efforts to solicit meaningful feedback on a regular basis from the grantees. The timing of the release of the plan did not allow the Department of State to address the network and highlight the proposed changes. The network also received a one-week notice for legislative hearing not allowing ample time for us to develop and present testimony. The Community Action Network encourages the Department of State to invest in a software system to minimize the amount of staff time that is needed to provide documentation for the annual compliance review of organizational standards. We want to thank you for including this as a goal in the state plan. This will save time and resources which can be allotted to more direct service activities. In regards to revised program and fiscal monitoring process and guidelines, community action agencies who perform consistently high in all organizational standards do not need quarterly program and fiscal monitoring visits. Instituting a risk-based monitoring model will prove beneficial to the entire network. Limited resources are better spent with community action agencies requiring additional TNTA due to lower scores on the ACROSS or TRACKS. We ask that DOS continues to keep the network informed of processes and changes to the recently implemented process. Discretionary funds, we strongly recommend discretionary funding only be available to existing eligible entities resulting in an amendment to their contract if selected. We recommend that DOS continues to solicit feedback from the Community Action Network regarding unmet community needs so that discretionary funds can be directed to these specific areas. Delays in RFA announcements, contract approvals, and Office of State contractor sign-offs, these delays result in cash flow issues and often a mad scramble to pull information together for submission. We urge DOS to develop ample timeframes and adhere to them to the greatest extent possible. Carryover of unexpected funds, we support the plan in allowing entities to carry over unexpected funds into the next year for program purposes. The flexibility provides a level of administrative management not available with many other funding sources. Tioga Opportunities is very supportive of the plan's intent to continue working with the New York State Community Action Association. The association provides valuable support, training, and technical assistance to the network of agencies throughout New York State. The website provides agencies with the ability to access resources quickly and easily. NISCUP provides the network with relevant grant announcements, legislation that affects our programs, and other pertinent information. In addition, the association offers regular professional development opportunities to staff and board members. TOI is involved with a number of committees, Social Justice Leadership, Partnership and Policy, Roma Alliance, to name a few. NISCUP staff do an excellent job facilitating these groups under the guidance and support of JACOR. I also want to ask that you please consider removing the MWBE requirement. This is federal funding that would not otherwise be subject to this requirement in other states. Although we support the intent of the requirement, as others have stated, it is especially burdensome to upstate grantees where qualified MWBE businesses are not readily available. We also encourage Department of State to continue their work on developing strong partnerships, again, with other state agencies to promote the strength of our network, which was evidenced, I think, most recently during the pandemic, where we were able to create very innovative service delivery systems and community engagement initiatives to respond to an emerging need. In closing, I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to the Secretary of State, Bill de Mayuga, Deputy Secretary of State for Economic Development, and of course, Director Manuel Rosa and his staff for their commitment and support of our network. For thirty-plus years, I have enjoyed a good working relationship and partnership with the Department of State, which has been rooted in mutual respect and trust. Lastly, thank you again for including community action agency directors to be a part of the development of this plan through participation on various committees, and for listening to the frustrations and concerns over some of the processes that can put a real strain on agency resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Was Chloe Wood able to join the call? Anyone at Mohawk Valley? No? Okay. That concludes our scheduled testimony for this session. We wanted to open up the floor to anyone else who wanted to give testimony. Please unmute yourselves.
Hi, my name is Patty Demma, here at Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. How are you today?
Hi, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to give my testimony this morning, and thank you for hearing me. So, again, my name is Patty Demma, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency and the New York State Community Action Network. I want to begin by thanking New York State for using CSBG funding to improve the lives of those in poverty. So, studies have proven that adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, affect children by changing the neurons in their brains and thereby changing their mental and physical responses and development. It's also proven that by building resilience around the children and the families who are experiencing this trauma, these effects can be greatly reduced. Children and families who have the protective factors surrounding them will thrive and succeed as opposed to staying stagnant or getting mentally or physically unhealthy. CSBG has supported Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency in funding trainers to learn, understand, and teach ACEs to our staff and community. We now have two nationally-trained trainers who can teach, as well as train, presenters, and spread the word of ACEs and resiliency. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency has continued to move the progression of this information to the community and created a tri-county coalition to build a self-healing community and to begin spreading the word of this important science. We want to thank New York State for providing CSBG funding for this important work. CSBG funds have also allowed for Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency to explore the science and results of fatherhood programs. The New York State Community Action Network and Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency are excited to begin our work with Mr. Reggie Cox and the Fatherhood Connection. This program teaches fathers to look at their inner child and consider how they were raised and to learn from their own experiences. So, fathers would be in a thirteen-week program, and at the end, they're going to become a champion or mentor. Each class encourages mentorship and men to look at their inner selves to have the best outcome for themselves and their families. This program has proven to help dads stay together with their families and therefore reduce child support costs to the state, as well as other state-funded programs for single-parent families. Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency is excited to be a backbone agency of this statewide initiative. I ask that you consider this work that the New York State Community Action Network is doing with ACEs and with fatherhood. These initiatives make a huge impact on families across New York State. The Community Service Block Grant funding allows the Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency to provide essential services to over nine thousand low-income families annually in Oneida and Herkimer Counties, while allowing our agency to be responsive to community needs. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your support to the families who need it the most.
Thank you, Ms. Demma. Anybody else at this room?
Would anyone else like to give testimony? If no one else would like to present testimony, that concludes the public hearing.
So, on behalf of the Department of State, Secretary Rosalo, Deputy Secretary Mayuga, and my colleagues here at the Department of State, thank you once again for your testimony, for your input, for your recommendations. We're now going to regroup and review not only the testimony, but other recommendations that we are getting through our comment period. I need to share with everybody that the comment period will continue to close the business on Friday, July sixteenth. We hope to be speaking to the network as we continue to develop the plan, and then the plan will be submitted to HHS at the end of August. So, thank you for your work, for your contributions, again, for the compelling testimony, and we just look forward to working with you. Thank you once again. Have a good day.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, bye-bye.